Yes, we're ready. Thank you.
Evening. Let's go ahead and start this city council work session. We have the roll call, please.
Let's see. Counselor Davis?
Here.
Counselor Yank?
Present.
Counselor Bobey?
Here.
Counselor Cormier?
Here.
Counselor Warner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kojin?
Here.
And Mayor Dayak. I'm sorry, Mayor Tappan. And he'll be arriving here in a few minutes.
Any mayor?
Any mayor?
Mayor Tappan. My apologies.
This is a discussion by the city council pertaining to the FYI 1920 budget. The mayor asked us to go ahead and get started, so Mike, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm actually nervous. Yeah, I've won a few times, but this is how important this budget is. And in short, you know, it's actually been a very educational process with me to work with my colleagues behind me. So with that, I want to welcome you and like to present, obviously, the first draft of our preliminary budget for FYI 1920. I know this is probably the first budget process for some of you. And if you have some questions during the slide presentations, please feel free. This is going to be one of several work sessions that we're going to have. Hopefully tonight, after my little introduction, we'll get into the departmental budgets for that pertains to next fiscal year. You've been provided electronic and hard copies of the preliminary budget for your convenience. Today, we will be starting with a short summary and an overview into the departmental budgets as well. Thought I'd share how we as staff went through this process. First, I'd like to give credit to our finance director, Linda Watson, and our finance analyst, Kristy Monroe, for assisting me in forwarding this balanced budget. They really did a lot of work here. Our budget practice includes components of zero-based budgeting, performance-based, line-item base. They were all components that we use, concepts that we use, in rolling out this budget so that we could get to the core of the budgets for ourselves. This is more than a budget, a balanced budget tonight. It's truly striving for true physical resiliency. And we will need to make sure that we're thinking long-term here and making sure that we have the strong reserves that we've been talking about quite a bit through the last few months. And when I say strong reserve, to me, it means a rainy day fun. And how we're going to have to always make sure that we grow that fund source so that we don't catch ourselves in case of anything going in the negative for our recession. Our process initiated in December of last year. We started this and we sat down on multiple occasions with even a few directors more than once, obviously, to review the performance measures and indicators for the past three years. We explored how the performance measures were doing. By that, I wanted to say, I wanted to know how they were, were they falling behind? Were they meeting expectations? You know, where were we? Sometimes when you set a budget in the previous year, it's not the same as you come out of the new year and that itself, council may have other directions at that point, for example, horseshoe bend, and how that sort of grew into a larger project than I think we all anticipated. The other thing that we looked at, the other thing I looked at, to see if any of the performance measures were struggling. You know, technology has changed quite a bit of how we practice and how we do some of our own techniques even today. So an example of a performance measure for me was like our police and fire do so well on that aspect. You know, their call for volume, when it rises and their response, times decreases, we know we have an issue, we've got a problem there. That's an example of what we were looking for with not only our police and fire, but all other departments. How does a service account for what we're doing today versus what it was it doing three, four years ago? Then we explored our operational plans, service levels, capital plans. Then we discussed where the appropriate place was in the budget. That's what I'll be presenting to you tonight. Our preliminary budget, these are some goals I'm hoping that we can get accomplished for today. First bullet shows an overall increase in the presented budget for 2020. It's not working. There we go?
Ready?
We're good? The changes primarily occur with the formation of the new community recreation department and capital projects that are slated for the new year. More discussion and details will be provided in the upcoming slides. We will review the revenue and expense budgets overall. As we work through the budget process, we'll be able to apply expenditure limitation figures once we receive them. Normally, they come out in April, the latter part of April, so we'll know what that number is later on. We are bound to have our preliminary budget adopted by state statute July 13, 2019. However, we are scheduled here to have our preliminary adoption ready for council approval May 22, council meeting. And that barring any continuations or we need to discuss things a little bit further, because that's what you have, is you have a moving budget. And what I mean by that is that it's going to go up and down as we go through this process. And when we get into our capital improvement projects discussion, that could change the dynamics as well. Another goal that I've listed, that I want to report is not on this chart, is that we need to plan ahead and create a three- to five-year out that includes setting policy with the mayor and council. That equals fiscal resiliency. In other words, what I'm saying is we always work at year by year, you know? And I think we're coming to that stage, the city of Page is ready to get ready for that third and five-year level out in advance. And that's where our goal is as staff, is to get in that position as we move forward with this budget. Budget comparisons for the city of Page. I thought I'd just throw out a little bit of a snapshot on this slide to show the adopted amounts for the city of Page operation budgets for the last couple of years. These numbers are exclusive of the Page utility budget and inter-fund transfers. You can see we've increased the operations of the city of Page by 7.8% over last year's budget. This variance includes the addition of three new divisions in the community and recreation service department that I'll be sharing with you, not this evening, but at a later workshop. We wanted to account for our new director to be on board with this co-teaming of the presentation, so we're looking forward to Lynn coming on board as well. On the summary by fund, the preliminary budget for the city includes, on the bottom there, the city totals of 31.5 in revenue, 36.2 in expenditures, and it utilizes 4.5 of a fund balance. The budget seeks to balance the allocation of resources, competing operation requirements, capital needs, debt burden, while still maintaining revenue for long-term financial stability. The current cash fund balance of the general fund is 13.2, which is approximately 84% of the budget of the 2020 general fund expenses. By comparison, this time last year, the cash balance in the general fund was 12 million, an estimated 12 million, which accounts for about 10.5% lower than it is currently. Revenue is expected to increase by close to 14% from FYI 19, and expenses are expected to increase from FYI 19 by 7.8%. The significant changes to the budget for fiscal year 2020 include the restructuring of our formerly Parks and Recreation Department. We are now renaming to the Community Recreation Service Department. We've added a new horseshoe bend division in the Community Recreation Service budget. This amount totals to 1.1 million added to the new year's budget. We've expanded the Lake Powell National Golf Course Division as we anticipate the possibility of taking over the operations of the course within the next year. This still yet is to be determined by council. We just wanted to add the numbers in so there was inclusion of the budget. These, obviously, we, this reflects an increase of about $877,000. And you will see the revenue in the course being budgeted in the amount of, obviously, 654,000. So we have some revenue to add to that. We continue to plan the covering costs of maintaining our horse corrals at Vermillion Cliffs Rodeo and Arena. These costs have increased 90,000, adding one full-time maintenance employee to the existing operations maintenance costs. Just a reminder, we received 70,000 in revenue from our corral rent to offset these expenses. In our capital project fund, we have several capital projects planned for the next fiscal year in the amount of 13.6 million dollars. These items are detailed in your budget document and include the John C. Page Memorial Park, Page Airport, the apron reconstructions. And one that has obviously been on there for a couple of years is the central garage relocation. We left that on there for discussion. Street capital projects, that's something that is dear to this, not only council, but to our community, to continue the improvements. Horseshoe Bend, phase three, and just to name a few of the larger projects. We also took a look at our community development budget and had moved the special events line item expense to our recreation division within the Community Recreation Service Department. This line item covers expense that pertain to our balloon regatta, Fourth of July fireworks, and various other summer events. The revenue by category, obviously, we have a strong reliance on our city sales tax from our business activity, 38%. Our intergovernmental, which consists of monies from our state shared revenue. I gave a presentation on the state shared revenue, the funding mechanisms that go with that, vehicle license tax, highway user fund, you know, judicial collection enhancement funds, substance abuse task force. Changes for our services, charges for our services include, but not limited to, his money received from horseshoe bend parking fees, rescue services, golf course fees, recreation concession income at a 22% rate. Other revenues include, but not limited to, the monies received or franchise and permit fees, land sales, property lease, interest on investments, court fines, and other miscellaneous revenue. Overall, you're looking at a 7% there. The franchise and permit fees consist of collective fees for propane, cable, electric services, as well as bond debt fees collected for local utility agencies. Our fine and forfeits are court fees, libraries, municipals, and allocations. Our interest in investments is at a mere 1%. Something that has been part of our quarterly reports by our council members, Cormier and Warner, is our city's sales tax revenue most recently. And right now, it's forecasted to be actually closer to 13.42 for the next fiscal year. Look at that chart. Expenses by category, our capital outlay makes up 38% of expenses, followed by public safety at 17%, general government 14%, public works 7%. You can see the newly added horseshoe bend budget currently reflects a 3% of the overall budget as well. This concludes my brief summary. And if you have any questions, we can discuss them. Otherwise, I would like to begin by presenting our public safety department budget to the council for further review and comment. Any questions? Aw, man.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
The projected 13 million is based on, what, have you seen the January yet? Because what I've seen is going to be lower than February.
We have received the January numbers. I believe they just...
What is it?
Did they just go out? I don't have here.
Is it up or down?
It was, uh...
We haven't seen the January report yet.
Okay, so that hasn't come out yet. I'm sorry. The month prior to that was the last one we reported.
You haven't seen January?
I have not. Kristy's probably getting them in.
I'm assuming we're going to discuss revenue in its entirety at some point, how the 13.4 is broken off, I guess.
Yes, we will. We'll have further discussion on those as we move forward. I'm hoping to get through a few departments this evening and hopefully we can, we'll have this in our scheduling as we'll have plenty of time to discuss the revenues and expenditures as we move forward. With us this evening is our interim chief, Lieutenant Tim Lee.
Good afternoon or good evening. The first time I've submitted or presented a budget, so I'll do the best that I can. First of all, police administration, 10-420-2700. 2019, the total was 11,500. This year, we actually decreased it to 10,500. We had it down to 9,500, but we added the Spillman Administrative Assistant back into the budget. We, at one point, thought that we were going to get an administrative, or the Spillman Administrative Assistant. We talked about adding a position, but we decided to keep doing what we've been doing for the last several years, and our admin assistant will continue to do that. Our special events?
Excuse me, Tim. Where are you at? What page are you on? Are you on the detail?
Yeah, I'm in the admin.
But you're on, okay.
101.
Okay, good. 100 and 101?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. You've done this more times than I have. Is everybody there?
Actually, it starts on page 100, correct?
Yeah, 100 to you.
Okay. All right. So fiscal year 20, the salaries, again, the police department administration, it increased from 199, 694 to 206,774 for this year coming up. The overtime stayed the same at 7,000. Industrial insurance, 4,475. Medical insurance increased to 49,632. FICA went up a little bit to 15,451. And the ASRS decreased down from 24,390 to 13,778. And the public safety retirement system increased to 26,030.
Can you explain why ASRS went down?
Can, because our former chief was not with the public safety personnel retirement system, so he was with ASRS.
And where are we currently on the contribution level between the patrol or the admin and the city? So at one time, we were like 52, 15, or something like that. What's the ratio?
Percentage of what we're paying against that.
Yeah.
You know, I really don't have that here. I think it's still probably in that same ballpark.
Because the new law doesn't affect existing employees. It only affects after July.
It does. Brand-new are in the tier three, so...
Okay.
We still have a lot of our officers.
Any other questions there?
Are we, just, we are still making those, the bulk-ahead payments to...
That's unfunded liability.
Lock our debt up.
Yes, we are. Yet that's not reflected here, but...
Still reflected to pay, even like in three years or two and a half years?
Yes. We're throwing another one and a half this year, one and a half million, but it's not in this budget.
Okay.
Do you guys want me to go through each line item with you?
If necessary.
No. Okay.
I just have a question on travel meals and schools. Page 101.
Right.
It shows records clerks 1,500, but it says 1,250 for each record clerk? Should that be a 2,500?
It should be. Well, the 2,500 was reduced to 1,500 in our meetings, and we just did not adjust that.
Down to 750?
Yes, we need to fix that. Thank you.
All right, our special events, 2,500, we increased it to 4,000 because we have a planning committee now that we implemented. And they're going to be planning community events and that type of thing. We're going to try to increase our visibility, you know, more, I guess, not so much as a formal role. We'd like to get out in the community more. So last year, we did pop with a cop in the schools and coffee with a cop programs, but we'd like to expand that more. We also have the substation over at the park that we plan on utilizing quite a bit for events. So we increased that from 2,500 to 4,000. Okay, subscriptions and memberships. That increased from 8,455 to 19,143. That's a big jump, isn't it?
That's a double. What is, what?
Wasn't it Lexipol?
Yeah, we, well, that's 3,900. We have Lexipol. That's our policy and procedure manual that went in. And what else? Oh, yeah, and we moved some things from other areas that were, we had those before, but we moved them all into this account. So there'll be some other areas as we move on that'll drop down.
You tell us, again, I'm not familiar with Lexipol. I guess it wasn't around when I was, but...
Yeah.
Tell me why we're doing that or what it does for us.
Yeah, when, up until a few years ago, we really, our policies were old. They were actually here when Counselor Yank was here. And what Lexipol does is they maintain the policy and procedure for us. We select the policies that we want, but they basically provide monthly updates. If there's new case law, federal law that affects different policies or state law. And they give us different criteria. Some of it is the best practice. And then there's other times if it's actually mandated by a law, whether it be federal or state, that law is in that policy. And that enables...
It's a database, if you will, of case law and compared to procedure and policy that's driven from them to you. So you don't have to, like, I mean, so you can be always updated on the newest case law? I mean, is that kind of what this is?
Right. And we sit down with them every, just about every month. And whenever there's new changes, like, we just had to send out 15 new changes to our officers that were, Lexipol sends to us. And again, if it's mandated, say, by a law, I mean, that gives us the opportunity to stay up on that. We do legal update training every year with our officers, but for us to get that training and then anything that changes and implement it into our policies, you would need somebody full-time just about do that. And Lexipol does that for us. So...
And just to note on that, these were budgeted in the patrol budget under contract services. We simply, and when you get to that in the next slide or the next department, that's been decreased about this much. So it was moved from patrol into the admin budget.
Does this decrease our liability at all as a city?
Yeah, I think so, as far as Lexipol.
That's my gut on it. I'm just...
Yeah, it's recommended. It's one of the top entities, recommended. Right now, we're looking at getting accredited, and that's one of the two policies, I believe, that they want departments to have. But it absolutely keeps us up to date and mandated from the old days of where we would give our policy book to, say, a secretary or something like that and just wait for it to get done. And sometimes it might not be the best.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, too.
Okay, uniform allowance, $1,200. It's $900 for the chief. That law is in that policy, and that enables...
It's a database, if you will, of case law and compared to procedure and policy.
Why are you listening? There's a ghost in there. Your blushing came.
This is water, I promise. I promise.
Okay, the uniform allowance is 1,200 for the chief and the executive assistant to the chief of police. And it breaks down what they get with that amount of money.
And the records clerk.
And the records clerk. Patrol salaries, it increased a little bit from 1,117 to 1,141,822. Overtime, we left the same. We've worked diligently the last few years on our overtime, and we've actually decreased our overtime a little bit each of the last couple of years. And hopefully, we can do the same this year. Industrial insurance, 44,208 to 51,697. 90,010 to 90,594. ASRS, 4,740. And the PSPRS dropped from 394,000 to another 314,749.
Why did it drop so drastically?
Well, the chief didn't have any money in the PSPRS. So unless we don't have, I don't know, in your funded positions...
My guess is in 2018, in July, the law changed for the contribution level of the patrol, of the employee to almost match what the city's contribution is. And it applies to new enrollees. And so in patrol, I would assume you have more new patrol officers that are bound by that new statute that changes the contribution level of the employee. Before, the city would pay, like I asked the other question, the city's contribution level might be 52%. Before, the city would pay, like I asked the other question, the city's contribution level might be fifty-two percent, whereas the employee was limited to eleven percent. Now, the employee's bound to contribute uh almost fifty-fifty to what the city contributes. So that's gonna-
But that's only for new hires. And this, we don't have new hires.
Well, in patrol, you-
How many hires do you have?
You probably do from the last two years.
Yeah. What?
Yeah, in the last two years, we've, uh, got about five.
Yeah, so they would be subject to the new contribution level, which is gonna continue to go down in that, in that, in that sector. That was that. One question I do have though is um relative to the med- well, a couple of things. Relative to the medical insurance of the admin. There's a, you know, like a big jump in, is that, is that because of the age of, of the individuals? How, how does that?
On the medical insurance?
On admin, for instance, the medical has gone up a lot. However, in patrol, it looks like it's for the increase in salary, it hasn't really adjusted much of that.
Okay, so I can explain your medical insurance. Depending on um the election of the person, the employee, they could have single coverage on our high deductible plan, or they could have family coverage on our um, on the high deductible and the EAP plan, or the, the full, what is it called? The other plan. Um, so in the budget process, if we have a vacancy, we're gonna budget for the highest amount because we don't know when we're filling those vacancies. And those, those options can change throughout the year. You can have an employee start on single coverage and switch to family coverage, or get married and add spouse coverage. And so when there's a, we, we've taken the actuals on what people are. We're not budgeting the highest on everybody. But we do, uh, if there are va- if there's a vacancy or a new position, we're gonna budget at the family coverage because it is the highest. And when, in the admin budget here, we're not sure when our new chief gets here, what election he's gonna make. So that could be one of the differences between these two. Um, and this administration budget also covers additional staff too. It's not just the chief, so.
Another question, Tim, is um, the budget always represents full pool in terms of employees. Are you at full pool now or where are you at?
No. We're three officer positions light right now. So we're getting, we're getting close, but we're not there yet.
So your actual numbers are gonna be lower until you fill them?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why they're lower every year, actually.
Yeah, because we rarely ever been full pool, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, we, we've been close, but um, right now we're, we're three down. Okay, oper- operating supplies, um, eighteen thousand three hundred and six. Um, a- again, we move money into some, move money around a little bit that'll be reflected later.
That the only, that the reason for the drop? Just some movement?
Yeah.
Your TASER plan, is that based on the number of TASERS you own?
Yeah, the TASER sixty plan. Um, we, we actually upgraded that um last year, but that's obviously turned into a major tool with law enforcement.
I mean, is it based on the number of TASERS you have? You get so much, I'm just curious if, you know, how they come up with the five thousand dollar per year subscription to that?
It gives us unlimited, at, at that cost, we get unlimited um, um, basically TASERS or equipment and all that stuff.
I guess what I'm asking is it um, is Mesa have the same charges as we do?
Based on the number of users.
That's, that's my question. Okay, thanks. Okay.
Brought the resource officer in.
Hey, yeah. Okay, operating supplies, eighteen thousand three hundred and six. Is there anything else besides the TASERS? Is anybody else have any questions? Uniform allowance went from thirty thousand three hundred and fifty-three to twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-six. And that's again gonna be based on our staffing, how much of that we actually end up utilizing.
Uh, really quick, uh, do you have anything budgeted for the bike units? As far as equipment or whatever? Just curious.
No, we have, we have a, a stockpile of supplies right now. We also have that credit in agreement with the bike shop here in town. Where they're gonna upgrade our, our bikes with newer equipment, so.
Uniforms are gonna work for your bike guys and all that?
Yep, they have their uniform ops.
All right, our office and equipment leases stayed the same. Um, our cell phones went up. So we have a phone for myself, three sergeants, and we also have one for the animal control officer. The drug phone is, it's not just a drug phone. It's kind of like a silent witness phone. And then our cradle point services for our mobile devices and, and our units. And the cradle point basically provides internet for our units.
Cradle point is where you put the orders in. I used to have one.
We'll update that.
And then our contract services went down to twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars.
That's where they moved it to admin.
Yeah, our Lexipol used to be in this account. We moved it out because it's, it's more of an admin type feature. It's not just for patrol. It's everybody. And then our travel meals and schools and-
Contract services, you guys use Recall. Um, what is the, the city uses Iron Mountain?
They changed their name. It's, it's Iron Mountain now. It's the same company. It used to be US Shred, then they changed it to Recall, then they changed it to Iron Mountain.
Okay, I was just wondering if we were dealing with multiple vendors?
No, we're not.
Okay, then our travel meals and schools, from thirty-eight thousand to forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars.
And that increase came from the cost for the police academy. Now the costs have been rising to send recruits to the police academy for lodging and-
They don't include lodging meals in?
Yeah.
And our program expenses, um, went up to eleven thousand four hundred and fifty. Again, we're um, trying to do more things in the community. And then our K nine expense, uh, we're, we're asking for the same amount as last year to maintain the K nine that we currently have.
Actually, it's gone up ten thousand.
Okay, so there is a, there's been, since this budget was distributed to you, uh, Tim and the manager have had a conversation. So they're reducing that um amount, uh-
Seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
So they're gonna change that seventeen seven fifty to seventy-eight seventy-five.
There was another dog put in the capital a couple of years ago planned for this year, but we're, we're not gonna do that.
Going to go back to the seventy-eight seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have one canine now?
Yes.
What was the second canine uh task? What was it gonna be tasked with? Was it?
Um, pretty much the, the, the same thing, uh, drug detection and patrol. Um, right now we do have one dog and, but if she's not on duty, the handler at the time, we, we call out. We, we call her out if she's available. If she's not, um, then we just go without a dog.
You have a, a handler already, uh, that, that would take on the task?
That's why we took it out. I, I don't think we have a, a qualified person right now. Um, we have the work. We just don't have the, the qualified person to take the dog if it's done.
Do, do you think you'll have one in a year or so, or?
I, I hope so in a, a year or so. Again, it goes back to our department's very young and that's an advanced position. They've gotta know not just the job, but case law, search and seizure law. Um, and it, and it's demanding. Um, you, there's minimum amounts of training. The handler has to do with the dog every year. Aside from the fact getting the dog selected and trained and certified is a huge expense. The, 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 the handler's gonna be just for each detection. The detection's six weeks and then the patrol section, sort of part of it is six weeks. And they move that around. When Crystal Thin, our current canine officer, did it, I mean, she was in Casa Grande for basically twelve weeks. And so, and it, because we're not staffed right now, that's another issue. I can't afford to send somebody away for six weeks. Aside from the cost, but I, I just want, would feel better about a little bit better qualification. There's officers, I think, that can do it, but they've got families and things like that. And those aren't the officers that are interested in doing it right now. So we opted to take it out. And then subscriptions and memberships, eight, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then our printing and binding stayed the same at two thousand nine hundred and thirty. And our firearms range expenses are two thousand dollars. And that's to just maintain the range, the targets, um, the, the wooden targets that we put on the target stands. Um, cleaning up the range, that, that type of thing. Uh, buying new targets to keep the range stocked. Uh, we have a Connex out there with all the equipment and everything that's needed. And that's just to basically keep the thing running.
How often do you guys qualify?
Um, we're mandated to qualify once a year, um, but we, we qualify twice a year, but the officers, a- aside from that, it's not mandatory. But we put on tactical type shoots and, and uh shoot, don't shoot scenarios.
That's my question. From a liability standpoint, I think there's huge value in that. Is that in your budget to, to do like a quarterly shoot of some kind of decision shoot or something like that?
Yeah, that's in our budget. Ammunition's in our budget. And tha- that's something that we, we take real seriously. And we, we make sure our officers, um, driving and shooting are two real big liability areas with us, so.
Subscriptions, there's nothing for bike patrol or canine membership?
I think the canine membership is in the canine-
Yeah.
Section. Um, but yeah, we don't have any bike patrol membership.
So they, they were gonna, we've got two certified bike patrol officers right now and we're, you know, getting at least two more. But that's the same thing. It's a pretty, I haven't gone through it. It's a pretty grueling physical type test. I guess we've put officers through it in the past that haven't passed. But again, it's something that, you know, you can't just tell someone, go do it. There's gotta be at least a certain amount of physical conditioning and they've gotta wanna do it. So, um-
Those high-speed chases are difficult.
Yeah. Whether you're on a biker or a foot, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's, communications, okay. I broke my neck there. All right, communications, our uh salaries are two hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. Overtime staying the same at ten thousand. The industrial insurance went up a little to nine hundred and two. Um, medical insurance dropped down to seventy-one thousand thirty-six dollars. Um, and then our FICA is twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-one and our ASRS is at thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen. Our operating supplies, thirty-two hundred. Um, and that, that includes the earbuds and all that kind of stuff that, that stuff actually wears out and has to be replaced pretty often. Our uniform allowance is at six hundred and fifty. And our equipment repair and maintenance, um, thirty-five hundred, all that stayed the same. And our office equipment leases uh went up a little bit to two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Cell phones stayed the same as last year at three thousand four hundred and eighty-six. And then our contract services increased to eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And then our travel meals and schools, um, went from sixty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, page is considered a public safety answering point and basically that's to send the uh communications manager that, that two thousand dollars is for additional training regarding that, so.
Uh, can we go back real quick on your contract services? The new um DPS IT Bureau contract, what does, what does that give us?
That's a temporary service until they get the direct link up. And I, maybe Kane can answer that a little bit better. He's-
So basically, the DPS used to cover the connection for a SEGIS. And they took that away last year and made the locations now pay for that service. So it's just a, until we get everything else up and running, um, there, we may actually have to keep that. We're still looking into maybe trying to use an internet connection. However, I'm kind of leery on that. Right now we have a direct connection to DPS.
DPS um holds the data to SEGIS, is that right?
Yeah.
They're, they're the access point.
Okay, that makes sense. So they're just covering the costs.
So the T one that you need for that is now our expense.
Got it.
Maybe they need some more HIRF funds.
And then our subscri- subscriptions and memberships, they did seven hundred and sixty cents from last year. Investigations, okay, our salaries went down to two hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars um from last year. Our overtime, we were budgeting the same, the thirteen thousand dollars. Industrial insurance is eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Medical insurance is forty thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the FICA is seventeen thousand four hundred. ASRS, uh, four thousand five hundred and fifty-three. And the PSPRS is fifty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. So our operating supplies, thirty-five hundred, we left out the same. Uniform allowance, um, two thousand eight hundred dollars. And that's basically Lieutenant Jones and two detectives. Equipment repair and maintenance, um, five hundred dollars.
So you get transferred out of there?
Uh, we had, um, we bought some specialized uh personal protective equipment last year in the budget. That li- that's why it was higher. And um, we purchased it last year, so we took it out for this year.
We don't need to purchase it again. It was like a one-time deal at that time. Okay, office equipment and supplies stayed the same, thirty-four ninety-five. Um, investigation, that travel expenses for, um, if we need to like send somebody out of the area or um it's happened where we've had to send a detective to another state to do an interview or something like that, that's what that fund is for. Cell phones, um, one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Contract services, uh, went from four thousand to six hundred and nine, six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Your evidence tech, are they on call?
They're on call. Um, they're not paid to be on call, but we do call them out after hours and they come out for um helping with search warrants and other evidence related needs, yes.
So they don't get a stipend for their phone?
Oh, they don't at this time.
So the travel meals and schools increased from eighty-five hundred to ninety-five hundred. Silent witness money, um, three thousand dollars. And that's by money. That's usually generally drug-related cases and that type of thing. And then silent witnesses tips that uh lead us to arrests and, and crimes. Um, subscriptions and memberships stayed the same. Um, three thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And our printing and binding increased a little bit to three thousand- Um, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and our printing and binding, um, increased a little bit to three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
You have three in that department and you only budget for two? So that's a business card?
I'll come in after you get the business card to me, or the in-house lawyer will find me too.
Larry, yeah, Larry gets his own.
Premier counsel, if you'll notice, um, actually the police department, in their request for this year, for this new budget year for FY '20, if you take a look at their last three years, they're underneath this, uh, proposal for the last five years. Now, mind you, you know, they're not fully staffed, I understand that, but we had a really adept, quite a few conversations on this, uh, on staffing levels and, and that was part of the, um, lot of our discussion was, was there a need for, uh, additional public safety officers? This was a case where they didn't have the data to support additional public safety officers because they're still down three officers. And that's how they've sort of been moving the last couple of years. There's still a need to fill those positions. So the request did not, request for any additional officers actually, um, morphed into another discussion for the police department and Lieutenant Jones to talk about what that need is.
All right, I'll try and really do this pretty quickly, but I put together a kind of a PowerPoint presentation to give an overview of our communications division and the need for some additional staffing. And it's not just, I have Paige Police Department's, uh, patch up there, we also have the Fire Department's patch because obviously our dispatch center doesn't just help the police department, it's a public safety dispatch center, uh, for police and fire medical. So a little bit of a background on our historical staffing data. Um, this was kind of a shock to me when I researched and found this out, but it's been twenty-two years since we've added a full-time dispatch position, uh, to our department. Um, going back about the last four years, a little breakdown of people that have left the communications division and why. Um, the majority of the people that have left in the last four years could not complete the training. Um, I don't know if any of you have been into our, our building and into our dispatch center, uh, but it takes a special kind of person to do that job. Uh, the multitasking, the, the super high stress levels at times, um, there's just a lot of people that can't do that job. And so people, you know, test and apply for it and, and get in there and, and, you know, in the early phase of the training program, they're not really doing a whole lot. They're just kind of watching. And if you have an experienced dispatcher and that's been in there for ten, fifteen years, they can sometimes make it look pretty easy. But when you're the one that's sitting in that seat by yourself, answering five, six, seven different calls at a time, 911 lines ringing, people on the radio, fire, medical, police, all talking to you at the same time. And you realize that that's what you're going to be doing for your job, that kind of stress can, can get to some people, so. Uh, we've had a significant number of people who did not complete the sixteen-week training program, um, that we have for our dispatchers. Uh, five of them got through the print training program and at some point decided that they didn't want to be dispatchers anymore for a variety of reasons. The stress and workload being one of those reasons. Uh, and then one was terminated and then one retired.
Can I ask real quick, what's the starting pay scale on that?
Sixteen seventy-nine an hour starting pay for dispatchers, and there'll be a slide that kind of breaks that down with some comparisons. This, this I really want to point out to you. Um, I went back to two thousand fourteen, went through all of our schedules for the entire year, and I found the high point and the low point for each, uh, for each year. The highest number of full-time people we had, the highest number of part-time people we had, and then the lowest for that calendar year as well. And so the green indicates full staffing and the yellow indicates critical staffing levels. Um, so you can see historically, even as of last year, we were fully staffed. Now, keep in mind, fully staffed doesn't mean I have five dispatchers on the radio working shifts. That means we have five people that we've hired. You may have two or three that are trained and working shifts and two or three in training that aren't really covering shifts yet, and maybe they don't even make it through the training program. So that number can be a little bit misleading, but we have at least employed full-staffed for most of the years, looking back. Um, one thing that I want to point out is in two thousand nineteen, beginning of two thousand nineteen, we were, for the first time ever since I've been here, critically staffed in both full-time and part-time positions. Um, so we were really struggling. And even from the beginning of this year to right now, we are almost fully staffed again. Again, only two of them are actually covering shifts. We have three and almost going to be, we got another one starting in the next week. We'll have four people in training. Um, so it is putting a, a lot of burden on our full-time people right now. Just to give you an idea of what, what does a dispatcher do, um, so obvious, the obvious stuff. They answer all the phone calls that come into the police department, both the 911 emergency calls and then the calls from people with cur directions, the calls from people around the city, the calls from uh, within our department itself. Um, they obviously talk on the radio to, um, our police officers, to our firefighters, medical. Uh, but they also talk to our surrounding agencies. Um, a lot of the dispatch centers for our surrounding agencies are in Flagstaff. And even, um, DPS, their Flagstaff dispatch center is shutting down. They're dispatched, they're going to be dispatched out of Phoenix. So there are occasions when their officers and deputies can't talk to their dispatchers and they, they need to talk to us. So we're talking to a lot of different people on the radio. And then they're entering si- entering information into our computer system, our Spillman CAD RMS system. So as a call comes in, they're entering that information into the computer system so it can get pushed out to the officers. So that's the three main functions that people think of that dispatchers do, phone, radio and, and computer. But there is a, just a long list of other things that take up their time during their, their normal workday, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I put some of them on there. Another thing I want to point out is, is Paige is a public safety answering point. If you haven't heard that before, a PSAP center. So we don't just get the 911 calls for Paige into our dispatch center. We get the 911 calls for the entire region. Come into our dispatch center and then they, our dispatchers have to send them where they need to go if they're not within our jurisdiction. So if they need to go to Park Service or they need to go to County or they need to go to Navajo PD, we are transferring those calls where they need to go.
Is there funding that goes, comes with that?
Not that I'm aware of.
State doesn't provide any supplemental funding and support for that?
Not yet.
To answer your question, they do. Uh, we just have them tapped in DOJ, Department of Justice. Um, we can get assistance there. That's one of the grants we'll talk about in the, in the, uh, capital improvement project discussion. There is funding. It's around, I think it's sixty-eight, sixty-eight percent where they fund. Um, but we have to sort of meet some criterias as well to receive the funding. That is requested.
Um, and just to break down, in two thousand eighteen, there was eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six emergency 911 calls that came into our dispatch center, and there'll be some, uh, graphs that kind of break that down. So the workload on those three tasks that we talked about, uh, they handle approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand radio transmissions a year, uh, which breaks down to about nine hundred and twenty per day. So as you can well aware, they're on the radio a lot, talking and listening. That's incoming and outgoing transmissions. Um, they answered fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two telephone calls, and that's total, emergency, admin, um, anything that's coming in through the telephone system, one hundred and forty-seven per day. And then they entered seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five calls into our Spillman computer system in two thousand eighteen. There's a breakdown for police calls and fire calls. Forty-nine calls entered into the system per day. Um, so they're busy with their three primary tasks, obviously, um, but like I said, there's also all those supplemental tasks that they have to take care of as well. So I found this study, uh, that was put out. Um, it was a nationwide study and it looked at, um, 911 emergency call volume specifically. And so it looked at, uh, agencies across the country, and so I found three other agencies, and I don't even know, they didn't name the agencies. It was Agency A1 through A, and, and so they weren't actually named. They did give the state that they were from. But I tried to find, um, some that were around the general area that we were in call volume, and this is specifically emergency 911 calls, not the total calls. Um, so I wanted to compare kind of apples to apples. I wanted to look at other agencies that have the same amount of work, workflow, call volume coming in as we do. And so you can see the breakdown, page PD in the first column there in the blue, the number of 911 emergency calls that we received in two thousand eighteen, and then the breakdown of Agency A, B, and C. Um, again, some a little bit less, some a little bit more, but in the general ballpark. So the next slide is the staffing comparison. Uh, when we're fully staffed, we have, uh, nine budgeted positions. That includes our communications manager, our full-time dispatchers and our part-time dispatchers. The staff for the other three agencies that we looked at were eleven. Uh, it didn't unfortunately give the breakdown if those were all full-time positions or if there was some part-time mixed in there as well. The city populations for the towns that have a similar 911 call volume coming in, like I said, you got to keep in mind, these aren't just 911 calls that we get for Paige, they're the entire region, 911 calls that are coming in, so. I based it off of our city population and the city populations of the other three towns that were being compared. A real quick slide about ISO rating, and this is more, um, on the Fire Department's side, but it does, our dispatch center has a, an effect on this ISO rating. Um, it's a insurance service office rating. It's a private organization that provides data on risk to insurance companies, and it can play an effect in what the insurance rates are for a particular region. And so, um, I, I got with Chief Reed to get some of our statistics and, uh, as of the last rating that we had, we were a five, um, on a one through 10 scale with one being the best. Um, 10% of this rating from the ISO rating comes from how our communication center is able to handle and dispatch calls. And there's some standards that the ISO sets for communications dispatch centers. And they set a standard of 80% of the calls being received and dispatched and completed within 60 seconds. And 95% of the calls being completed within a hundred and six seconds. And Chief Reed was able to give me some statistics from last year, two thousand eighteen, and we were significantly under the standard in 60 second and one hundred and sixty, or one hundred and six second standards. Um, and that is, you know, for the reason that I've already talked about. Our, our dispatchers have so much that they have to do, especially in a, in a busy time. If you get an emergency situation going on and you have, you know, ten, 12 people calling in 911 to report this emergency, you got, um, other people calling, you got police that she's trying to dispatch, you got her stuff trying to put in the computer, you got fire medical she's trying to dispatch, um, and so that affects our, our call times by having one person trying to do all this.
So can I ask a question? How would you improve that number if, other than having more than one dispatcher on duty at one time?
That's how we would do it. And trying to retain the current people we have now. Obviously, someone who has more experience, has been there longer, is able to better handle the multitasking and, and getting stuff done quicker. Um, with the turnaround that we have, we constantly have new dispatchers in there and they're just not as capable of doing that, and so our numbers are going to suffer.
And so when you're scheduling, is there times when there's, um, more than one dispatcher and, and peak ti- if you're by peak times and, and that, or?
Yeah, we have worked on peak times, but the, the problem is with our staffing, we, there really is no time when there's more than one dispatcher in there. There may be a brief overlap in shifts when a, uh, current dispatcher is there for an hour or so as a, the new, the new dispatcher's coming in and they overlap for an hour. Uh, but there really is no shift where we can have two people working. And especially when we get to our critical staffing, we can't, we can't cover that at all, so.
So when you were looking at the other departments, um, were you able to tell if there was like a significant amount of like, I guess we have the tourism that come, because our pop-
Volume as the, the comparison. Other agencies that have the similar call volume to us, not, I didn't look for agencies that had similar population levels as us because that wouldn't be a, a fair comparison. Uh, but there wasn't, uh, a breakdown or information from the other towns about their tourism levels. Um, and here's that slide I talked to you about with our salary comparison. So our starting salary for dispatch level is sixteen seventy-nine an hour. I did a, um, a survey of the state of Arizona and I went to several different job sites, um, that post dispatch jobs, and I found sixteen different postings in Arizona for dispatch jobs. Um, I took out, there was one, there were two outliers that I took out. One that was really much higher than the average and one that was a lot lower than the average. I took those two out and I took the middle fourteen, um, job postings and averaged them out. And the lowest of those fourteen was seventeen thirty-one. The average was nineteen thirty-five and the high was twenty eighty-nine per hour for starting salary. So I just wanted to get a comparison about what, what some of the factors could be leading into why we can't keep our staffing levels up and.
Where is the range in our class and comp, um, study with the beginning salary and the, the mean and the high? So we have-
We have a range as well.
This range, so where, where, where is that sixteen seventy-nine relative to?
That's the beginning. That's the low, that's the minimum starting salary.
And that's where you guys have adopted the beginning at the, the, does it, does it vary if a person has, uh, prior experience or?
It would, yeah. We have the, the option to look at that range, and so what we do, the problem is, is we don't get a lot of what we call laterals for dispatchers. So we generally have new people that have no experience in dispatching, um, that are going through our training program. So most of the people we're hiring are starting at that initial rate. If we had someone that had experience, then we would try to match them up to someone that we currently have employed similar years and experience.
So the class and comp study was, uh, comparing our community with, with several like communities within the state of Arizona and the region and, and so forth. So we know that that range is, is consistent with current pay grades, pay salary ranges of other like communities. So would it be likely then that those other communities start, have, have just opted to start up higher in the tier?
They may. The, the, the research that I did didn't give me the ranges, like their low, middle and high ranges. They just, whatever they were posting as a starting salary for that position on the job posting is what I used. I don't know where it was on the range.
So when a person graduates from your dispatch academy, I assume they get a raise?
Not, not, right now, we're not doing that, no.
That could be a strategy where you use to keep these people. Once you get them through and you say, this guy's going to work, it may be a, something you, you consider.
And it'd be a, something you, you consider.
Tier or range, I think that-
Kinda filter it and then they send the stuff that needs to be dispatched to the officers or the fire or medical to the dispatchers that are working the radios. So, other agencies have that capability of breaking things down and, and breaking some of those tasks up. We just have never done that.
Does the budget that you've proposed include the requests that you're proposing? I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you're looking-
This extra person?
It includes one, one dispatcher.
Okay, this budget does include one dispatch?
Yes.
And is, and you feel that that's, that's adequate to, to meet demand? At this point?
Anything we add is gonna increase what we're talking about, I mean.
I didn't mean that to be a-
Yeah, no, it's, it's all-
No, it, it is a balancing act, but, um, the most, probably the most devastating thing you can have in dispatch is turnover, I would think. And so I think we need to ask ourselves an honest question. Does the pay scale meet the job? You know, does it? That's the question. It, it may or may not. And, um, at some point, it would, to have a, a stable work environment in dispatch, uh, it's life or death cause you only have one on the floor.
Mayor Council, um, the, the initial request, and this came through negotiations and talks and with Lieutenant Jones and Lang was, they initially had three, um, positions for dispatcher, at least in the budget. Um, but we wanted to make sure we could address one, um, and, and handle the data and, and we, we could substantiate that. You know, um, that would be the call of the police department at this point. That's through the discussions that we had and that's where we came up with the one. Was to sta, start to set, set the stage for a crisis that they have there, on their dispatching.
In all honesty, um, and, and I know I'm probably gonna get, uh, flak for suggesting it. You compared other agencies with the same amount of call volume. Even the agency that had six thousand calls in a year had eleven dispatchers. I would like to see a request for two dispatchers. Uh, to me, that's just, makes sense because, uh, even the lowest one had eleven dispatchers and we had two thousand more calls and two less dispatchers. To me, that makes more sense from a retention point of view. Um, be, uh, because it is a high-stress position. You're right, not everybody can do it. And I think if, if the department was able to spread that out, um, through scheduling, the retention would be a lot better and, and would, would assist.
You know, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, Teresa. I do think though, that the problem isn't necessarily, I mean, if you're having a difficult time staffing the positions to begin with, more appropriate, appropriating more money for more positions that you can't already staff doesn't solve that problem. To me, it's, it's a pay, it's a pay problem. And I, and I think sliding the scale up slightly, we know- Know that the scale is appropriate. And we, we, that's a recent survey, that survey's only two years old. This is recent data of all pay from similar, you know, competitive communities. So, I, I would think that a more effective means would be to slide that scale up slightly, become more competitive in pay and then retain-
More qualified candidates.
Retain your people and, and, and keep the positions full that you already appropriated to begin with. Uh, I think that's a more effective approach. All comes down to dollars and cents at the end of the day anyway. But if we appropriate, you know, another, you know, whatever amount of money for, for positions that we can't fill, we haven't solved the problem.
Well, I, I think you're, you're also having to, to fill those positions, but you're also having to increase staff too. Because you're, you know, with nine total and four of those are part-time people. You know, it, there was nothing in there that said that those eleven were full-time or part-time or anything else. But, you know, one dispatcher per shift is, you know, we had that when I was a cop here. And then again, there were times when we had, you know, two dispatchers on at a time. And, you know, I think that that was because we had full-time positions that were, you know, cut down to part-time positions over the course of time.
Well, I, I, I don't have any problem with part-time positions if they're training to become full-time and you can open up slots, cause it's certainly an effective way to-
The other thing that I think, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is I think our volume of code-three calls are probably higher than average, uh, communities, uh, because of the medical challenges we face with the intoxication and substance abuse we have. Just call it, call it what it is, but you generate a lot more code-three calls here. And the problem is, that's a more demanding call. It takes more attention. You can't, you can't mess that call up. It's code-three. And so, um, you put that into the formula as well and you've, you've raised their workload without the numbers showing it.
Would we be able to add two more positions and raise the minimum starting pay?
They're willing to do that, uh, yeah. Certainly, money's money. This all comes down to how you appropriate other departments to balance that act. That's what it comes down to. There's, there's a finite amount of money. So as we go through this process, you're gonna, I mean, there's, it's not a, we don't print money in Page. So, I mean, we, we can give pu, public safety more appropriation at, at, at another expense, at another cost for another department. That's the way I view it. I mean, it's, it, where does this fall? You know? Certainly, public safety's one of the highest priorities we have.
Definitely. Must definitely.
In fact, um, thirty-five percent, uh, you're talking about public safety. And that includes fire as well. Thirty-five percent of all our departments make up, um, what we have.
Because if it's, I mean, if it, it, obviously it comes down to money, the, you know, is, that's the bottom line. But I, I honestly believe we need to be at the same level as the same, at the same depart, that the departments that are doing the same amount of calls. We need to have the same staffing.
I don't think, just because another, another agency is, they're here, we need to mirror that. I think we need to watch what the demand is and, and be, um, be more sensitive to what we need. It doesn't matter what this, what someplace in Tennessee's doing. What matters is what we need here in Page.
Right, I, I, I understand that, but I also understand the job of a dispatcher and how high stress it is. And if you are having that high amount of turnover, something is wrong. If the stress can be leveled out between staff, rather than burning out your staff and increasing your, your turnover, it, it would be better to have staff that reflects the amount of calls from other departments.
I was in there just for a few minutes when I went and visited the police station and they have a ton of stuff to look at and things to do. And, I mean, they have a foot pedal so they could talk to different people at the same time. And just to have one person do that all day long without having any extra assistance, I mean, it's just a good way to burn that person out, in my opinion.
How do you cover that person when they're sick or, or vacation?
Right now, we're, we're using our communications manager. Um, she's filling actually just, actually more than a full-time position. She's working about sixty hours a week, covering the radio console instead of doing her admin duties that she's supposed to be doing.
Does, does this position, uh, at all, uh, lean toward maybe, um, multitasking of a, of another, of a, maybe a, another position that, that has a, maybe a fill-in capacity? Or is there any kinda cross-training that's relative to this? Or is this so sus, specific that that's not even, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking in the ter, in terms of, of, of an admin position that, um, may be in the building that, that could somehow supplement or, or support in some way. Keep coming back to how difficult it is to find that really good one. And so what can we do to help alleviate some of this workload to make, or at least have a, a backup, if you will?
I feel like if we only have one person in there with calls, if they end up getting five calls at a time, it's not like they really have the option to get up and go say, hey, I need help. Have that person come in and start answering phone calls and then walk away again.
But you have two clerks budgeted, do you have two clerks hired?
Oh, we don't. We have one clerk, records clerk, working right now. We have one in backgrounds right now that's-
Where are they in that, in that scale from low to high?
Most of them, uh, other than one, we have one that's been there over twenty years. And so she's significantly higher on the scale, but most of our dispatchers are less than three years.
Below-medium?
Definitely.
Well, I would agree that-
We only have one above median.
Well, it appears to me that, that we need to move the scale over to the right a little, um, consistently with all of your positions to be more competitive in retaining those special positions. It just seems like that's the solution, as well as, as allowing another slot.
But we don't need to run the police department for them.
No, no, I, I-
I mean, to give, to, we need to fund that position if it's needed. Need to give them suggestions about moving the scale and then let them figure out whether it's, uh, somebody to take off some of the calls so the, some of the person that's capable of handling the high stress and stuff. Otherwise, they're gonna be here, eh, about ten more hours. We haven't even got to the fire department yet.
I wanna, I, I, I just wanna say, you guys, this is a great job of, of, um, the, the, the background information that you provided. I don't know if that's, that's, uh, Lieutenant Lang or Jones, or is that Linda? But, um, compliment you guys on, uh, well-laid-out program. It's easy to see.
Very helpful for us, yeah.
Sandy, in the background there is-
Good job.
It's very helpful.
Thank you very much for that.
We will hopefully continue this format, uh, with all our departments, but this is what I'm getting to, um, validating, uh, through performance measures, indicators, service levels. We need to talk about those and, um, I think the police department did a great job in articulating that this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
We just need five hundred minutes.
Five minutes, I'm sorry.
Air department's easy.
Five minutes, five minutes and we'll-